I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have a nice little crowd here tonight. We have no written communication. I do have one report of Boarding Committee, at least from my end, and that's the Board or the school calendar as to when we have our first meeting in July. It was brought to our attention that someone has the opportunity to potentially go away and spend time with their family and see their kids do some amazing things and would cover that day. And so Jeanne and I heavily encouraged that and suggested we change the calendar to have our meeting the next day on, was it July 13th?
Thirteenth.
Yes.
Which would work out well for Mrs. Ernst, too, because she's going to be gone for that first meeting. So as long as everybody's okay, we'd like to change the reorg meeting and first meeting to July 13th.
My name is...
Everyone good?
Yep, yes.
Great. Do we have any other reports, Board reports? All right, I'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Brittany and Denise are here from Turner Construction to provide you with an update on Phase Two capital construction that's been ongoing throughout the year and Phase Three, which actually started early because we had the opportunity to get into the building and get access with the hybrid model. And then we're really getting ready to ramp up Phase Three construction as we move into the summer months. So welcome.
Could I just, one second?
Yeah.
Because this is just jogging my memory. So earlier, when did I sign the bond last week?
Oh, Monday.
Monday. So I went in and signed that bond that we approved to refinance the bond. And we did get 0.284% to refinance that bond. So I just wanted to let everybody know I did that. It was related to capital construction, so I forgot to inform the bullpen.
Can we take our masks off?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Tan. I'm the project engineer with Turner Construction for the capital improvement project. Here with me today is Brittany Sein. She's the project superintendent for this project. For our presentation today, we're going to give some updates on construction updates for Phase Two and Phase Three capital improvement project. We're going to start off with a few photos on some of the work that was completed under Phase Two in the past couple of months. And then we also wanted to showcase some of the before and after photos for the cafeteria that was completed last summer. And then we'll roll into the progress update for some of the construction work that's been ongoing and on second shift at the other side of the high school basement, which is the ceramics and technology room. Just as a general update for Phase Two capital improvement project, we're actually approaching towards the tail end of the Phase Two capital improvement project. We are currently at about 92% completion. So we're getting really close in wrapping up Phase Two project. The first slide here I have is the high school and middle school gymnasium area. And in the past couple of months, we have completed all the window replacement work in the middle school and high school. And one of the biggest challenges was all this interior wood trim work at the high school windows. And on the photo on the left here is the high school north gym. This is one of the most challenging areas due to the size and elevation of these windows. They were required to use some scaffolding system. And there was also some coordination that were required between the window trim installation and the window screens. And the photo on the right here is the middle school gym. We've installed all the windows. And within the past two months, we have also installed the manual lever in the middle school gym area. Going into the next slide here, we have a photo on the left is the new temperature rise frames windows and also the new double door windows. From the past couple of months, there was some coordination that was taking place for some of the testing that required at these temperature rise frame doors. And there was also some brick infill work that were required at the brick location to match the existing brick wall. The photo on the right here is, it's probably a little bit harder to tell, it's a new precast Toronto base that was installed along the high school corridor wall. Prior to this, the existing base was either cracked or they were in poor condition. And there were also some locations where just regular green rubber base were used. So now we have a brand-new precast Toronto base to match the flooring system. So that's all we have for Phase Two construction update. Like I said, we are towards the tail end of it. Some of the remaining work to complete that is currently scheduled for this summer, including some of the refinishing and polishing of the Toronto flooring in the high school stairwells area. All the corridors area have been completed at this point. So they just have to come back to complete this work in the summer. And then there are also some of the grills that needs to be installed at the high school stairwell doors, at the TR frame sightlights. And they're also going to be installing a wood-like veneer panels at the TR frame sightlights. And then going into Phase Three, high school cafeteria, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on this because I'm sure at this point, a lot of us have already seen the final photos of the cafeteria. But I just wanted to take the opportunity today to showcase the final before and after photos of the high school cafeteria that was completed last summer. The first slide here you can see is, on the left is the hallway going into the cafeteria. And then the right is the after photo, which you can see all the new light fixtures, flat ceiling and flooring system and mechanical equipment that was installed. Next photo here, photo on the left is the old serving line. And the photo on the right is another angle of the cafeteria with the new seating area and also the new serving line. Here is the high school basement corridor right outside of the cafeteria, art room and home and career room. And as you can see, there's some change in how the brightness with the new wall paint, new flooring system, and light fixtures and ceiling tiles. And this is a before and after photo of the home and career room. And as you can see on the left photo, it seems a little bit more cramped. And it's a little bit darker with the old windows. And the photo on the right, there's been a drastic improvement on natural lighting with the new windows. We also installed all brand-new casework and appliances. And the new furniture layout also provided us more space for students to move around within that space. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Brittany to give us a construction update for some of the work that's currently ongoing at the other side of the high school basement, which is the ceramics room, technology and wood shop area.
Hello again. Nice to see everybody. So just a quick update for anybody who did miss. We did actually get permission from the district to start in the ceramics, technology and wood shop area early. And that has been a huge help for a lot of unforeseen conditions that especially came up with some of our underground work. So our first start at work started in early January. We were in the ceramics room. So the picture on the left showcases just the, all the desks moved out, chairs. The school district moving all the other furniture out. And we started tearing down some of the interior partitions. On the right is after we completed abatement work. So similar to the cafeteria kitchen and some of the other classrooms in the basement, we abated these plaster ceiling tile. And then there was about two inches of asphaltic flooring that was removed that contained a very thin layer of asbestos. So in that, the photo on the right, that work has been completed and we have our new workspace. So as I mentioned, we did have some unforeseen conditions, very similar to the kitchen and cafeteria areas. We opened up this slab that hasn't been touched in over 90 years. So there was some pipe that was deteriorated that we had some extra time to replace and take care of. And then with that, so that was on the left. And then on the right, we installed new trench drains. So these drains are getting installed where the clay pottery wheels are going to be placed. So this is just preventative so that if there is water that splashes or slur, that goes right into the drains. There's a whole system that was laid in and completed early in February. So here you can see a really good outline of how that trench drain was fed into the concrete slab. And then the yellow material that you see there is vapor barrier and new rebar. And then on the right-hand side is what it looks like once the concrete and a floor fill was placed inside the room. This gave us a really nice clean working space for the remainder of the high work. So in these pictures, on the left, that's when we began some of our framing, our mechanical equipment was beginning to get installed, electrical roughing. And then on the right, this is a pretty good idea of what we're looking at today. This picture, I think, was taken about a week ago. But even since then, it just shows you how quickly construction can progress. The rest of that room has been painted, ceiling grid has been installed, and light fixtures are being dropped. So we get to a point where we start seeing a lot of progress quickly. Some of that initial work just seems to take forever, a lot of the underground and things of that sort. But now we're really going to start seeing a lot of the major progress here.
Nice to see it in June and not August.
Yeah, us, too. Takes a little pressure off of us, for sure. So hopping over to the other side of the corridor, we're going to focus on the technology area. So we received this area about a month ahead of the original schedule in early April during spring break. So this first picture is just our general demolition. Some of the interior wall partitions were removed. This space did serve for a few months to be the ceramics room temporarily while we jumped in on the other side early, as well as the photography area. So we completed the demolition there. And then on the right-hand side, that's some of the preparatory work that we did for the abatement in the corridor. So you can start seeing the general theme of all of our work. It's a lot of general demolition, abatement work, and then we get into the fun stuff. But one thing that I don't think a lot of people get to take a look at because it's an area that you shouldn't be in unless you're suited up and trained to do it. But this is a photo of what the inside of the abatement area looks like. So it has two layers of poly installed. There's negative air machines that are constantly pulling out any loose fibers or debris. And then what they did in this space is they first removed that ceiling and all of the associated supports. And then that gets completely cleaned up. And then they move down to the floor. And that's where that two inches of asphaltic flooring is removed. So I thought it was a cool picture just to showcase what happens within that space there. And then the picture on the right shows it all cleaned up. So you can see that the ceiling's been removed and the flooring is also taken out. Then just going through these real quickly, similar theme here. The ceiling was taken out, flooring in both of those spaces. You can pop out to the next one. And then, very similar again, doing a lot of underground work. So we started removing the slab over in the wood shop here. That's one of the newer areas of that part of the building. So that was an addition that was in 1956. So a little bit of a different space. And then over on the right-hand side, you can see that there's a temporary wooden door behind that ladder. And then within that, we're going to be installing a new sectional door, like a garage door. So that will be great to give the building access or just larger access to be bringing in material and equipment because right now, there's really nothing at the high school. And these two last pictures are a good snapshot of what we're looking at today here. So we're starting to do some of the slab underground work within the wood shop and technology area. So there's a lot of electrical roughing with all of the new equipment that's going in there. So it is a pretty time-consuming task. And then the photo on the right-hand side, this is a view which will actually, this space will be broken up into three separate rooms. Will be the computer room, innovation and print room. And right now, we're starting to install mechanical units, all the mechanical ductwork and piping. So we're in a really good place right now. And looking forward to showing you guys the photos at the end. So aren't there any questions I can answer?
What? We have gotten an update about the cafeteria floor. Can you shed an insight on what's going on there?
What was the last, I want to make sure I don't leave any gaps. What was the last that you knew of?
Cracked.
Okay. Yeah, so we are experiencing some cracking. We're currently working with a general contractor and some third-party inspectors to do some testing. So we actually have testing lined up to core the floor tomorrow morning, or sorry, tomorrow afternoon. We're going to look at, try to find the source of the cracking. Right now, it's unknown and it's hard to say. There's a lot of different theories that have been thrown out there. And we did have a meeting with all the contractors and parties involved last week to try to determine that. So this is our first step in doing that. So we'll probably have a better update for you in about two or three weeks, once that testing returns. Anybody ask any questions?
I have another question.
Yeah, sure.
Are you guys having any trouble getting materials?
We have been notified a few times that there are material delays. I do have to say, because we did start ahead of our original schedule, a lot of those that we've seen starting to come up, we were able to prep for. So for instance, we had some heavy gauge studs that needed to be installed. We were told, hey, those are two weeks out. But we knew so far in advance about it that it wasn't an issue and it didn't impact our schedule in that sense. We were also fortunate that all the mechanical equipment had been ordered the previous year. So that was delivered last June. We've had it sitting, ready to be installed. So yes, we've been notified of certain things. But the position of where the project, you know, being that we had started originally last year, a lot of things had already been ordered and prepped for. So we haven't had a huge impact. I would say our biggest one right now is our casework. We have been notified that there's a 10-week lead time on it. So we have the time to still get it in before school. And luckily, we've been very upfront with contractors asking to, hey, if you know of delays, we need to know now because we're hearing it across the industry. So, you know, don't tell us when it's July 31st that it's a problem. So we've been pretty fortunate in that sense. But yes, definitely, there's a lot of delays that we're seeing.
What about cost?
I'm aware that there are cost increases, but that has not impacted our project because it's already been bid out. And there are clauses in our contract that protect us from situations like this. So nobody's come to us with any notices for cost differential at this point. And we don't foresee it being an issue. We're prepared for it. We've had that come across on other projects that we've been on, you know, within Western New York. And so we're prepared for when it does happen, if it does. But I don't foresee it happening with this project here.
Yeah, it was very, Turner approached us sometime in November, I think when we went fully remote and had the idea to get started on Phase Three early. It was one of the benefits of the hybrid model. Certainly not an ideal model for teaching and learning, but in the world of construction, we were able to relocate all of our classes out of these rooms and section off that part of the building because we were at half-capacity and get started early. So as you can see, there's a lot of benefits, not only in the timeline of construction, but also avoiding some of the things that, you know, Dominic brings up that you may have heard exist in the world of construction or new home construction right now. So thank you for that proactive approach. And I'm also thankful for our high school administrators and teachers for being flexible. If there's no other questions, we can move on to the next item on the superintendent's report.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks. Welcome, Mr. Foley, our internal claims auditor. He has his annual report for the board.
Okay, my name is Richard Foley. I have been the district's claims auditor since 2014, six years or so. And it's a pleasure to be here with the board in person. Thank you very much. My presentation is going to cover the role of a claims auditor, a checklist of my review process, the things that I look for, and a summary of the findings for the past 12 months. Educational law requires all school districts to audit all and each and every claim prior to payment. The law took effect in 2005 after the state found the downstate district was misappropriating funds to the tune of millions of dollars. So purpose of the claims auditor is basically to prevent the misappropriation of district funds. What is a claim? A claim is a document such as an invoice from a vendor prompting payment due for goods and services that were provided. Claims auditor verifies the accuracy of claims and ensures that claims are in compliance with the law, regulations and district policy. Claims auditor verifies that claims have proper authorization and supporting documentation such as a purchase order, invoice. And the position adds another layer of protection of the district's financial resources. It's another set of odds. It's redundant and it's supposed to be that way. But it serves a critical function in the protection of the taxpayer's funds. Okay, once a week, I work in the district office. And there's usually a stack of claims awaiting my review and approval before the checks go out. So I have a checklist of things that I look for in my review of each claim. And I'm going to talk about some of those, most of those, actually. The claim, I make sure that the claim has proper authorization and supporting documentation. I check to see if the approved purchase order matches the goods or services provided. And a purchase order is the initial document that's used to procure a good or service. The information from a purchase order is inputted into the district's financial software program called WinCap. And the purchase order lists the amount of the purchase, the number of items being purchased, the description of what's being purchased, and the budget expense code. One thing I check is to see if the purchase order was prepared before the invoice date. Every expenditure should be approved by the purchasing agent or a person of authority before the purchase is made, not after. I verify the mathematical accuracy of invoices and confirm that goods and services that were actually received were completed, with the packing slips, and verify that there's a signature confirming the delivery of the goods. I check to see if, to make sure that there were no sales, there's no sales tax included in the invoice because this is exempt from the sales tax. I ensure that the expenditures comply with board policies. Examples are conference reimbursements, meals, allowances, auto expenses, the IRS mileage rate is what's used to reimburse mileage expenses. I ensure that the checks that are issued are in sequential order so that the beginning check number in the check run is sequential to the last check number of the prior check run so that there's no gap. And I review checks that are issued. I make sure that the checks that are issued matches the payment schedule that I previously audited. Okay, once a month, I submit a claims auditor report to the Board of Education in your packet. And this report lists any confirming purchase orders and any other findings that I might find. Confirming purchase orders are purchase orders that was issued after a purchase, not before. And the monthly report goes along with the warrant reports in your packet, which is basically the check register. Okay, for the past 12 months, I prepared a listing of audited payments. There's basically three methods of payment to pay a vendor: checks, electronic transfers, and Visa card payments. So for the past 12 months, we issued 2,132 checks, 56 electronic transfers, and there were 31 Visa card payments. Due to the pandemic, the number of checks issued decreased, usually averages about 2,700 checks per year. It's down to 2,132 this past year. Some of the reasons are athletics was curtailed during the pandemic and therefore, there were less payments for officials, official fees for the games that they were free. Food purchases went down. And, let's see, travel, and yeah, very few conferences. So although the amount, the number of checks went down, the amount, 24 million, is about the same as last year because the capital projects is taking a large chunk of expenses there for construction companies that are being paid for the capital projects that's in process. Electronic transfers, those are usually for the bond interest and principal payments of your bond issued, New York State retirement system, dental insurance, 403B payments for retirees. Visa card, very few, 31. That's used for small purchases, generally online purchases, normal times that be used for hotel reservations, airline reservations for conferences that are out of state or out of town, that kind of thing. Okay. Next. Good news on this slide. Purchase orders. A valid purchase order confirms that adequate funds are available in the budget before the purchase is made. A confirming purchase order is a purchase order that's submitted after the date of the invoice. And that circumvents the internal control process and should only be used in emergency situations. Okay, now from the chart here, I went back five years. I listed the number of confirming purchase orders and the percent of the purchase orders. And as you can see, it has gone down dramatically. It's basically been cut in half from 2016-17 to the prior 12 months. From 57 confirming purchase orders down to 22. Percent went down from 1.9% to 1%. That is very, very good news. Confirming purchase orders is almost a common thing among districts. So to get it down to 1% is very, very good. So I want to commend the district staff for that. And also, I think honorable mention goes to Laura Bezinski, the business manager. I think she was instrumental in bringing that down. So good work.
Thank you, Laura.
So that's a good thing. In conclusion, purchasing policies and procedures are being followed at an acceptable level. There's been no misappropriation of funds or other critical issues that I found. Most common errors are minor. I listed some of those, most of those actually. Most common ones is... Most common ones is a vendor invoice is not entered into the accounts payable schedule. That's because there's more than one invoice in a pile that are together, and a clerk must miss one of them. That's only happened three times. Incorrect amounts, a key once in a while is entered into the accounts payable schedule. That's basically a typo, entered a five instead of an eight, something like that. And I found a couple times the incorrect mileage rate used for reimbursement. The faculty member used the wrong mileage rate, which is supposed to be the IRS rate, and that changes every year. So basically, these are very, very minor errors that I've found, and very few. So that's good, too. Recommendations, simply continue to keep staff informed and updated in the procurement policies and procedures, and any changes in policies such as IRS mileage rates and changes in board policy and procurement. And to reinforce with staff the importance of timely purchase orders. Communication is important from management to staff, conveys to staff that following proper procedures is being taken seriously by management. So, that's all I have for tonight, for this year. So I'd like to thank the board for your continued support. Appreciate it. It's been a pleasure serving the district for the last six years, so thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board?
What do you think has contributed to the decline in confirming purchase orders?
Communication with staff.
Is that the kind of numbers?
When I see, I'm sorry. When I see confirming, I list them every month. That list goes to the business manager, and the business manager, I know, follows up on that. So, that cycle, right?
Yes. Yes. I would love to add that Rick is a great partner to the district, and all of our auditors are really partners to the district because they help us improve our procedures and our practices, and Rick is no different. If he ever has any questions about how we process something, or the documentation we have, or why we did it a certain way, he's very willing to have those conversations with us, and we can kind of talk through it together. And if we need a little bit of a different documentation, something that makes that claim packet stronger so that it's looked at in the future when we get a controller's audit or an internal audit, the packet is just that much stronger and can be a standalone document. So thank you for that. It's great to be able to have that relationship and know that we have the same interests there.
Well, thank you for following up on any questions that I have with you and your staff as well.
I know Rick, every year, goes over the background and the history of why, you know, we have this process. There's actually a movie that's been made about it starring Hugh Jackman and Ray Romano. If you have HBO, it's called Bad Education. It's a pretty good watch, especially if you're, you know, a board member and you have that interest and that expertise. It's worth the hour and a half.
It's horrifying.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you've seen it, you know, it's very interesting to see how things can go wrong in a district if you're not following these procedures.
Right. You don't want anything to go wrong. It's taxpayers' money, for one thing, and you want their continued support as well. You know, you need their confidence in the system that everything is being done properly.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. The last item on the superintendent's report is our Pathfinder's Task Force Digitally from Mr. Pigeon at the high school.
Thank you, as always, for this wonderful opportunity to shine a light and a spotlight on Amherst Central High School and our Wonderful Students of the Month and Teacher of the Month. I'll jump right in. Let's start with April, Student of the Month, Natalie Miller. Natalie was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Winslow, and she shared that Natalie just excels at everything she does. She's responsible, personable, very kind, and really makes a strong connection with faculty members and her peers. Great athlete and always does her best, so congratulations to Natalie Miller. Grace Jamison and Owen Grubb were nominated together, dynamic duo, really doing a lot of work down in the music wing this year. They were nominated by Mr. Pommetlars, and he shared that both students have been instrumental in assisting with our operetta and our pulling off of Strawberry Fields, which was an intricate and complicated production, but it was a huge success. And he also noted all of the help they've done this year, specifically noted as well when Cheryl Stern came in, our alumni from 1974, and did a Made in Buffalo video program. They were there to help out with that as well. So these two are always around and helping in the music wing, and certainly very, very deserved of this recognition. Congratulations, Grace and Owen. Emery Thompson was nominated by Mr. Banis, and he's one of these perseverance stories. Mr. Banis had shared how hard Emery's been working to overcome the fall struggles and getting up to speed with our new learning models that we had to adopt given the pandemic, and Emery just never gave up, kept trying and trying and trying, slowly over time, just did much, much better, and at this point is having a great year. So congratulations to Emery for staying the course and persisting through things that are challenging, and that's a great mark of character. Great job, Emery. Isabel Steimle was nominated by one of her peers and friends, Natalie Merrill. She has always been very impressed with Isabel, and Isabel's a role model, known commodity at Amherst, known for many things, great student, great athlete, and congratulations. She was accepted to UCLA, which Natalie noted isn't the easiest school to get into, very low acceptance rate, so that in itself is a huge accomplishment. Congratulations, Isabel. Leat Forrest was nominated by her peer, Louisa Huston, and she shared that she nominated Leat for Student of, because she's always working incredibly hard and works together with her track mates and her track season in athletics, and just has had a great year. So congratulations to Leat for being nominated for Student of the Month of April. Teachers of the Month, Mr. Bauer was nominated. Mr. Bauer is always a known commodity and was nominated by Sarah Coteras. She noted that Mr. Bauer has just gone out of his way to make the science labs meaningful this year, and that was no easy task in our learning model, only meeting in person at sometimes one time a week, and then creating things that make sense remotely as well. So Mr. Bauer has done a great job, and kudos to Mr. Bauer for staying the course with wrestling as well. When the season was in jeopardy, he kept his wrestlers engaged in many, many different ways, and even to this day keeps them engaged in community service. So kudos to Mr. Bauer, always deserving. Ms. Cadino was nominated. She is known for working tirelessly. She was nominated by Ms. Winslow, and she shared that Ms. Cadino is always there for her colleagues and her students. She's always willing to share her knowledge of literacy and literary books and is a go-to with the faculty and staff in terms of good reads that she's been involved in recently. So she's a fountain of knowledge when it comes to reading, and she's just really a great resource around the building for many, many reasons. She heads up our GSA and really advocates for our LGBTQ students, and so she's a big leader in the district and in the building. So thank you, Ms. Cadino, as always, for your hard work and efforts. Moving on to May, Lilly Zent was nominated, and Lilly was nominated by Ms. Sorrentino, and she has Lilly in both homeroom and in Algebra II. Lilly is known as a student that is intrinsically motivated, works very, very hard. She's one of these quiet, humble students, always respectful and kind to her peers. Ms. Sorrentino also noted that Lilly is one of the few students that will laugh at her corny math jokes. For that alone, Lilly deserves Student of the Month, so congratulations, Lilly. Sneeet Yuhans was nominated. Sneeet was a new student, international student, that came to us last year, another perseverance story. Sneeet really had some challenges acclimating to a new country and a new school, but Sneeet just kept trying and trying. Now Sneeet is knocking it out of the park. She's having a great year. She's noted by her teachers. Mr. Paul Kurzel has just made note of remarkable progress over the course of this year, always polite, attentive, attending to her studies, and she's really, really working hard, carrying a 90 average this year. So great perseverance, Sneeet, and we're really thrilled that you're part of our Amherst family. Ireland Hall was nominated by one of her peers, Vissalani Martinez, and she shared that Ireland is just one of these great leaders across the board. She's a leader on her sports teams, she's a leader in the classroom, and a really kind and really nice young lady. So congratulations to Ireland for being nominated. Max Witten, a known commodity in Amherst. There you see him with his famous trombone, active in the music wing and really active all over the building. He's a great leader. He had an excellent quote when Mike Randall came from WKBW to cover Strawberry Fields in our operetta. So kudos to Max for really making that feature pop on Channel 7. So thanks, you, Max, and congratulations for being nominated. Onward to Teachers of the Month for May, our Student Services Crew, Ms. LaGoff, Ms. Skelzo, Mr. Benton, and Ms. Surzek, you might note, was nominated earlier in the year, but kudos to them for a busy and challenging year across the board, whether it was how you apply for college in this climate, how you navigate this climate socially and emotionally, and how to get through academics. They were there for all of those topics for their students, and they've been working tirelessly this year. So congratulations to all three of you, and all four of you, for that matter, and the whole office. Ms. Gonzalez was nominated. Ms. Gonzalez was nominated by one of her students. I got to hear Nick Bonifassuto sharing that she's always been a great teacher, one of his favorites. She's always there for her students and really treats her students like their peers and really becomes involved in conversations, encouraging them, and really gets to know students on a very personal level. No surprise, Ms. Gonzalez is an Amherst alumni, so there's no surprise that she would treat her students like peers. So congratulations to Ms. Gonzalez. Madame Moranto was nominated, and you see her with Latoury Fell in the backdrop. Madame is always up and upbeat and really does a lot of great things for her students, whether it's bringing in timbits a few times a week, always making the French curriculum come to life. So kudos to Ms. Moranto for all of her enthusiasm and work this year. Ms. Smith was nominated by one of her students. Look it up here, Maggie Beeden. Quite a long write-up. The Cliff Notes on the write-up are basically, Ms. Smith has gone out of her way this year to really help students navigate this technological model that we were using for learning and being remote, and being remote a few days a week, et cetera. No surprise, Ms. Smith was a classroom flipper long before the pandemic and really has mastered the technology in making it very meaningful, very engaging, and really using technology to enhance learning. One of the things that Ms. Smith specializes in is putting all the ducks in a row for the students, so not only navigating the learning, but all of the little minutia that goes with the learning. So all of those kind of best practices, those little tips, she really paves the road for her students when it comes to head to toe, everything they need to be successful in this type of environment. So kudos to Ms. Smith, and I'm glad that you were recognized for that. And that's it for our nominations. Thank you for your kind attention this year, and it's always a great opportunity. I appreciate the time you give us at these board meetings. To the Board of Education Superintendent Penella, I thank you very much, and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
We requested that maybe we continue it into the future, only because it's often difficult for the kids to attend the meeting or the teachers to attend the meeting in person because they are so actively involved in our community and extracurriculars in our schools. So that's something that we'll certainly take into consideration as we move into the summer months and look ahead to next school year. And that's the last item in the superintendent's report. Thank you.
All right. We will need a motion for new business.
I'll make a motion for new business items E1, A through F, 2, A through E, 3, B through E, G and H.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I think we may have missed some of the items in the financial part.
Did we? I thought...
B, C, did you say B, C, D?
B through E.
Oh, I'm sorry, B, you're right.
E and H.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Mind you're slowing things up. We got a lot of anxious sound.
Sorry.
New hires back here. All those in favor of approving new business items E1, A through F, 2, A through E, and 3, B through E, G and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. With that, I will welcome all our new hires. Welcome to the Amherst team. We look forward to working with you. I know there's a big list here, so I don't know who each and every one of you are, but...
Please stand.
Oh yeah, please stand and introduce yourself and tell us what building you're going to work in. That would be great.
Hi, I'm Melissa Delamore. I'm going to be here in Wintermere, and I'm teaching ENL.
Great.
K to five.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Very excited.
Hi, I'm Amy Nety. I'm a new hire here, and I'll be working in this building, and I'm an ENL teacher as well. Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kristen Lyons, and I will be teaching sixth grade ELA at the middle school.
Welcome aboard.
Hi, I'm Steven. I'm just her boyfriend. I was just here.
Oh.
Nice support.
Nice support. Nice work.
We'll give them kudos for that.
Nice support.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Comiskey, and I'll be in the library at Smallwood Drive.
Great, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We look forward to having all of you work with us.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations.
Ms. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
I just had to share the testing results from the cafeteria floor, once it's available.
Great. We will need a motion for executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session regarding the employment of a particular person.
Go second.
I'll second.
Zerrington. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.